About the power of relationships. Yeah? I need you to look at the person on your left and on your right and ask them, "Do you know who you're sitting next to?" "Kia obona wan sheba wan tauta, awso." "I can say even man, but do you know who you're sitting next to?" "Waii tu dutu mopela man." "Do you know who you're sitting next to?" So... This is what we're gonna do now. We're heading over to a section where we are going to network. Right? We're going to encourage you. We're encouraging, it's not even an encouragement, it's a challenge. That you need to meet at least five new people. Don't, if you came with someone, tell them, "Kita obon." "Kia sogala, no." "I'm going to meet someone new." You never know, guys. Your next connect could be the person that's right next to you or the person across the room. But don't look at them first and go, "Ay, mareme bra." "Ah, wen na, naki tawo." At least five new people, right? For the next 10 to 15 minutes. If you have a product, can I see if you've got a product? You've got your product with you. You've got your product with you. Okay, I'm gonna come to you because I wanna speak to you. Right? Don't leave. What we need to do, don't move the chairs. "Gaybon, I'm coming to you." Don't move the chairs. Front row. What I need you to do, you're just gonna stand and connect with the group behind you. Are we together? Are we together? So you just stand, don't move the chairs, connect with the people who are behind you. And as time goes, I'll challenge you, we'll move around, but please, don't move the chairs. How many new people? At least? At least? At least? At least five. Alright, are we ready? Let's network. Don't move the chairs. Please stand up from your chair, turn back, network with the people who are behind you. Let's start networking. Let's get networking. Let us get networking. Once again, please don't move the chairs. At least five new people. Alright, you've turned around. Please stand. The row behind you. Let's start networking. Introduce yourself. Who are you? What do you do? Pitch, pitch, pitch. At least five new people. Let's network. I give out to one that only one because it's gonna be trouble. Let's network behind you. Alright, let's continue networking, let's continue networking. Let's network, let's network, let's network. Who are you, what do you do? Pitch your business. At least five new people, I'm loving what I'm seeing. Once you're done, move on to the next individual. If you have a product, please come to the front, come to me. If you've got a product, please come to me. If you're a product, please come to me. Please come to me if you've got a product. Product, product, how to a product? If I'm a product? Come to me, please, if you've got a product. Alright, I need you to stand on my left hand side, please, please be on my left hand side. Only if you have a product, let's continue networking. Eight more minutes to go. Only if you've got a product. On my left hand side, please. Just, just check with the team, man. Alright, let's move along, right? Two minutes down, eight minutes to go. Please, at least five new people, you can go more. Let's continue networking. Let's continue networking. Alright, to our online audience, ladies and gentlemen, I've got entrepreneurs on my left hand side. These entrepreneurs have brought their products with them, so very briefly, very, very briefly, just a minute, they're gonna tell us who they are, what their product is, and where you can get their product, alright? Alright, my brother? Please look straight into the camera, we've got people tuning in from all over the country. Your name, your product, very quickly, let's get straight into it. Alright, mics are busy getting fixed up with new batteries. But to our online audience as well, you know, thank you so much for staying with us up until now. Continue to share the love, continue to tell us who you are, continue to share your story of resilience, what has kept you going. Alright, we're good, we're ready to go. Brother? Who are you? Your product? What is it about? Straight into that camera, one minute, let's go.
Hi, how's it? My name is Tewo Honkwenya, I'm all the way from Limpopo, I own Rejuvenation. My product is the one that I'm wearing. I'm wearing this mesh edition jacket. Uh, uh, it's one of the products that we're making. Rejuvenation stands for uniqueness. It also stands for people who want to stand up from the crowd, who also embrace being unique. And this is also one of the other winter collection. We have the, the black and white, and also, we also have the, the, the gold and black.
Fantastic. Quickly, your details, how do people get hold of you?
Uh, this is, this is where you get a hold of us. On Instagram, it's Rejuvenex. Facebook, it's also Rejuvenex. And also you can find us on Twitter, also Rejuvenex.
Thank you so much, my brother. Much appreciated. Let's go, let's go. You, you are the same? No, 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 but you represent one company. We need to, we're gonna give our entrepreneurs an opportunity, my brother. Please come through. Please come through with your, you've got a product? Alright, sure. Here's the mic. Straight into that camera, my brother, one minute, who are you, what do you do, what's your product about?
Hi, everyone. Odebo. Hi, everyone, my name is Makatu Chibura, and I'm the founder of a fast-growing candle company, The Light Candles, who are based in Soweto, who are the only 100% black-owned youth candle business that manufactures up to 30 different colors. We make all types of candles. With me here is a scented jar candle. We also do household fluted candles, dinner candles, and church pillar candles.
Fantastic, how do people get hold of you?
Uh, on, on, on Instagram, it's LightCandlesZA. Facebook, The Light Candles. Instagram, The Light Candles. Google, The Light Candles.
The Light Candles, thank you so much, my brother, and all the best. Let's keep moving. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, five more minutes to go. Let's move. I, I, I don't want you sitting down. I don't need you to be alone. I need you to go and meet somebody new. Let's continue to network. My brother? Your product? Who are you, what do you do, what's your product about? How do people get hold of it? Let's go.
Okay, my name is Dehalis Dehope. I'm a perfume manufacturer, cosmetic manufacturer. My brand name is Aroma of Life Fragrances. So you can get a hold of me at Pretoria West, Tsan University of Technology. And where you can get a hold of me is on, on Facebook, Aroma of Life Fragrances. And also we have a different range of female perfumes and male perfumes and cosmetics. Body lotions are on the way.
Body lotions are on the way, Aroma Life. Aroma of Life, smells nice.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, sir.
Nice, my brother. Alright, fantastic, let's move. Look straight into the camera, my sister. Who are you? What's your product? How do people get in touch with you? Let's go.
Alright, hi, my name is Dani Casitole. Uh, I'm based in Santuron. I'm from BND Kids' Fragrances. So what we do, we specialize with roll-ons, which is the kids' deodorant from the age of four, obviously depend with the development of the kids. And we also have their kids' fragrances. So any child from four years, it's safe to use the deodorants and the fragrances. You can contact me on BND in Kids' Instagram and also you can contact me on 074 8064657. Thank you.
Fantastic, this is lovely. Very lovely, thank you, my sister. Yes, sir. Okay, I will, I will hold it for you. I don't mind. I don't mind. Very briefly, very, into that camera, who are you? What do you do, what's your product about? How do people get hold of you? Let's go.
Hi, everyone, my name is Kellezo Kumialuburu, the founder of Kimmy's Creations. I make my own candles, re-diffuses as well. It's what makes your whole smile app. Uses it. Um, we've got wax smarts as well here that we make and they just make your house smell amazing and we really want to branch out our business so that we're able to be in people's homes, in hotels, lodges, in many places as well, so. It smells amazing, right? Thank you so much.
How do people get hold of you?
Okay, so we're on Instagram, Kimmy's Creations. You can also call us as well or send us a WhatsApp on 081 259 3144.
Kimmy's Creations. Smells very, very nice.
Thank you so much.
All the best, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, let's continue networking, I said at least five, at least five. But five more minutes and then we're getting on to our panel discussion. Dubi D. Good, how are you? Good to see you. Hashtag join us for tea. Who are you? What's your product about? How do people get in touch with you? A minute, let's go.
Hello, everyone, my name is Dubis, the founder of Dubis Fashion and Beauty. I'm here at hashtag join us for tea. I'm making our product from satin material, I have got satin here with me. Satin bonnets, satin pillowcases, they are very, very good for the skin and for the hair. If you want to get that glow, trust satin and silk. We are on Instagram, we are on Takealot, we are at Bob Shop, we are at the retail shop at Eden Vine Main Lane Store. And you can find us on our website as www.dubis.co.za. And our phone number, 72694716. Hashtag Bakali Bake.
Thank you so much, Dubi. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Amazing, amazing products. If you want the glow, contact the Dubis. My sister, let me hold that for you. Just, just, just hold on. Alright. Go past five, we've just got five more minutes left. Five more minutes to network, to meet someone new, to go and see net bank bankers, to inquire about the net bank pocket balls and other services that are available for you. Five more minutes to go. Five more minutes. Visit the exhibition stands, see what the exhibitors have got for us today. My sister, straight into that camera there. Your next customer's watching you. Who are you? What's your product? How do people get in touch with you?
Jumelang, my name is Romo Gansamaseke and I am the owner of Crema Craft. These are our pieces, these are handcrafted jewelry pieces that can be worn for an everyday use. We tend to not wear our cultural, cultural pieces, so I created a modern piece to wear. So you can find us on Instagram and Facebook, which is Crema Craft. And we're based in Mabopani.
Crema Craft, all the way from Mabopani, contact details?
Uh, 079 541 8066.
Fantastic, this is amazing. And we wish you all the best. Alright, next up, let's move, let's go, let's go, let's go, alright. We've got a author. There is the mic, look straight into the camera. A minute, who are you? What's your product about? How do people get in touch with you? Let's go.
My name is Bridget Majuta. I am an award-winning author of the book titled, When Married Life Lives You, Take Your Power Back. It is available for 350, including delivery from www.casi-eh, what, Casi Reda? Sorry, Donzio, Donzio Reda, I'm so nervous. Um, you can also get it from me directly, 072 8267365.
When Married Life.
Lives You. Take Your Power Back.
Take Your Power Back, alright. All the best. All the best, Bridget. Four more minutes left, let's continue networking. I encourage you and challenge you, meet someone new. Don't stop meeting new people. Pitch your business, what do you do? What are you about? And then we're getting on to our panel discussion. You don't wanna go anyway. Wow. My sister, straight into the camera. Tell people, tell our online audience all over the country, who you are, what you got, what's your product about? How do people get in touch with you?
Uh, good day, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tedi Mulabo and my company name is TDM Creations. Creations deals with handmade accessories. You have your earrings, your necklaces. We also do clothing as well. So to get us on Facebook, you can get us on TDM Creations, which is T S H E D I M Creations. And on Instagram is TDM underscore Creations. And also you can get me on 068 395 110. So our products are easy to wear every day for your boardroom, for your party with ladies, for everyday life, you can wear them. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, TDM. Incredible, amazing. Yeah. My goodness. Unfortunately, I can't buy your products because I'm, I'm single. Hello. How are you, Lerato?
I'm good, how are you?
Good to see you. Straight into the camera, your next customer's there. Who are you? What are your products about? How do people get in touch with you?
Good day, everybody. My name is Lerato Tefu and I'm the founder of Makeup by Nunu. We provide professional makeup services and not only that, we have started our cosmetic brand. We offer lip glosses in different shades. We've got the red, the nude, and the clear. We also sell eyelashes and lip scrubs. If you want to get a hold of me, can you please contact me on 079 963 0089. You can also follow me on social media at Makeup by Nunu. Nunu and you, and you.
And you, and you.
Thank you very much.
So happy to see you and the growth in your business.
Likewise.
This is incredible, incredible, incredible. You wanna get yourself, and like you winter, no?
Yes. No, 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 need dry lips.
Alright. All the best, Lerato. Come, my brother. Straight into the camera, my man, who are you? What's your product about? How do people get in touch with you?
Good evening, good day, good day, everybody. My name is Mpoawakawa. And our tarlo na Watrichvili. Our business started in 2019, Rereksa outside Nkomo Village. And Mosekiling, and we manufacture cleaning detergents. You can get a hold of us now on 076 221052. Uh, our social media platforms, Kista Cleanah SA, Moefes Bugu. Kista Cleanah SA, go Twitter. Kista Cleanah underscore SA, go Instagram.
Star Cleaner.
Star Cleaner, thank you.
Fantastic. Lovely, my brother, and all the best. Sure. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Where's your product? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen. When you go, ne? The camera. Lerato? Lerato? Alright, come through, my brother. Very quickly. Just, just, just put it down. Because it's quite a big one. Just look straight into the camera, look, look into that camera, my man. And talk to your audience, so we can do this and I can be able to see it, sure. Evans? The mic?
Yeah, cool. Thank you very much. My name is Mboawakawa. The co-founder of Power Star Lena and Innovation Director. And then I get the electric cars and then also developing the energy mobile power station during low shading whereby this is what can be done. It can be used for a house, and then also now get a project, looking for some electricity. All working in. Have a little gas or see your true low shading. You can still use it to power your house.
Yeah. Alright. Get a lot of more, 078 754 9248. We got it? Ladies, please, you, you, the camera. Not a problem, my brother? Sure. Please watch the camera, ne? Yeah. Nah. Alright, thanks, my brother. Thank you so much, this, this is, this is amazing. Wha- what is this?
Okay, so we are Lungilicious.
Lung, Lungi.
And this is indigenous juice that is made out of plants and herbs.
Wow. So you've got this juice that is made out of plant?
And herbs.
And herbs.
Only, we have a stand, they come and taste them.
I will come and taste.
Yes.
How do people get in touch if they want this juice?
On Instagram, we are Lungilicious underscore and the number is 063 735 3632.
Alright, thank you so much. I will come back and I will taste. Wow, okay. Yeah, yeah, she's got a store at the back. Those of you who love other beverages, there's a store at the back. The other beverages, you know. The healthy stuff, yeah. Healthy living. Lungilicious at the back, she's got a store. My sister? Just five more minutes? Five more minutes? Five more minutes before our panel discussion. Hold the bag for you, straight into the camera. Who are you? What's your product about? How do people get in touch with you? Let's go.
Okay, my name is Carol. Uh, my brand is Kebab, Kebab, Kebab by Carol K. Uh, what we do is we retail handbags. We don't manufacture, we go around looking for great handbags.
Fantastic.
Cute handbags. And then we sell on behalf of the manufacturer.
Fantastic.
So we do, what we do is we look for unique handbags, quality handbags, and we sell them at an affordable price. Um, you can find me on Facebook, my Facebook is more active. Kebab at Carol K.
Look straight into the camera, your customer's there, my sister.
And we have a stall here, the mall.
Sure.
That trades every day. Um, the entrance, the main entrance, and my number is 076 770785.
Thank you so much. Fantastic, lovely, lovely products. Alright, so how many do I have? I've got four more, ne? I've got four more, my sister, you, I've got four more, yeah? So because of time, just want you to, to shoot. Get straight into it, right? Come through, my sister. And, and look straight into, I'll hold this for you. Here's your mic, look straight into that camera, please.
I am Ndombe Zodas Kasana. The name of my company is Ndombe Z Fashion. And Ndombe Z Fashion is African print, ready to wear women's clothing. Because at Ndombe Z Fashion, we are decolonizing fashion. Um, because you shouldn't only wear African print and fabrics and colors on Heritage Day and weddings. We should wear our African prints, colors, and fabrics every day. So my clothing is everyday wear. You can wear it for a business meeting, you can wear it to a party, you can wear it to a club. You can find Ndombe Z Fashion on Facebook as The Ndombe Z Shop. On Instagram, it's at Ndombe Z underscore Brand. And our WhatsApp line is 064 884 5863. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ndombe, fantastic. Ladies and gentlemen, please, we are wrapping up. Please, can everyone take their seats? Please, can we all sit down as we get ready for the panel discussion? Ashes, please help, can we get everyone seated? As we get ready for the panel discussion? We'll have more time to network. Please, can everyone take a seat? My brother, straight into that camera, your product? No, you don't have a product, that's it, but because I want people to, to see, Mos. You've got a product, but you don't have your product, how come? No, my brother, you're supposed to have your product. Quickly, look into the camera, what do you do? What, what's your business about? Quick.
CEO and founder, Mr. Monday Ituri. This is Omoloti here, we're based in Extension Fort, just behind the mall here by Nkomo Village, 49 Limpopo Street. Do catch us on our socials, Mr. Monday underscore Ituri. Mr. Monday Ituri SA on Facebook and Twitter. Thank you. We specialize in handcrafted burgers.
Handcrafted burgers, thank you so much, my brother. You see, you should have brought your burgers, now would be tasting now. Alright, my, hey! Family! How are you? Fit Munduza. There's your audience, there are customers. Tell them what you do, Fit.
Hi, everyone, my name is Constance Kubeka from Fit Munduza. Fit Munduza is an outdoor company. We do hikings and campings. So you can get us on Facebook, it's Fit Munduza. On Instagram, it's Fit underscore Munduza. And then my question for you today is, can you hike it? So we've got t-shirts and posters on our store there. We also have a hiking calendar, you can come and check which day you can come and join us and keep fit the fun way. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Hey, some of us need to hike after this winter. We need some serious hiking, ne? Talk to Fit Munduza. Alright. Hello. How are you? Fantastic, please hold this. Alright, I'll hold this for you, let me do this for you. My sister, straight into that camera, your online audience is there, your customers are there. Who are you? What are your products about? How do people get in touch with you?
My name is Nata. Um, I'm the founder of a company called Kumani Grenjo.
Evans? Can we get another mic, please? One, two.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Nada, founder of a company called Kumani Grenjo. We are a manufacturing company. We manufacture fine fragrances, we custom make special scents. We manufacture scented-inspired hand and body lotion travel size. We also manufacture bath salts. There's a lot more products that we manufacture. You'll find them at my stall there, there at the corner. We manufacture hotel amenities. Your lotions, your shampoos, your conditioners, your travel size.
This smells very, very nice, how do people get in touch with you?
Thank you. People get in touch with me on 073 365 7737. On Instagram, it's Kumani underscore Grenjo underscore Scents.
Scents of opulence.
Grenjo, only luxury products.
My god. Smells good.
Thank you.
Very, very nice.
You need to get yourself.
All the best. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a chat afterwards. Alright, our last product holder entrepreneur. My sister, woo! Energy drink? Here's the mic, you need the mic. You need the mic, yes. There's your audience. Tell them more about the Cheetah Energy Drink.
Hello, everyone, my name is.
It's, it's on, yeah, talk.
My name is Vuyo Kumede from Cheetah Energy Drink, PTY LTD. We produce this healthy energy drink. We produce this healthy energy drink, our energy drink has only zero point zero three percent caffeine. It's highly powered by a lot of vitamins and amino acids. You can get us on our website, www.chetahenergiedrink.com, and on all social medias, and on zero eight four eight one three seven zero three five, thank you.
Thank you so much, that is Cheetah Energy Drink. Incredible, incredible. Alright, please can we take our seats? Tell us, let's pass, as we get ready for our Baola chat. Ladies and gentlemen, please can you take your seats, ashes, please can you assist? Thank you so much, please can we take our seats as we get ready for the Baola chat? Continue sharing your experience on our social media platforms, hashtag join us for tea, hashtag together Bakali Baker. Online audience, you've been watching, share your experience, what were your nuggets from the speakers, what is it that you've taken away, and what has kept you going? We're heading into a very powerful panel discussion with three very powerful females, you don't wanna miss out, stay tuned in. Please can we take our seats? We'll have time to go and visit the exhibition stands. And please do not leave. Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you.